Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 3rd Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If we could please, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Regal, could you call her all for us, please?
Dr. Allen Stuck?
Here.
Ms. Colleen Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Dr. Martin?
Yeah.
Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinto?
Here.
Swedeman?
Yeah.
Mr. Feinberg?
I'm here, I think I'm here.
So you have to bear with us a little bit this evening, we're finally moving into the computer age. And I, I'm keeping my paper for awhile, but I'm gonna pretend that I'm using the system.
You can do it.
Thank you, sir. No one has signed up in advance for public comment this evening, is there anybody in the, in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, hearing now. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the September 19th, 2019 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Move.
Move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Students? Okay. Next item is our student rep reports, we have Reese Wagner from the middle school and Katie Bon Giovanni from the high school, welcome.
Hi, I am Reese Wagner and I'm an eighth grader at Haverford Middle School and I'm involved in playing field hockey, I'm in the musical, and I do a student council. So, and outside of the school, I am, I do swimming and I went to Chatham Park Elementary School. So, believe it or not, the school's year is flying by and Friday is the midpoint of the first marking period. So, we will have our first Activities Night of the school year on Friday from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. We have a dance, board games, and athletic events planned, and this event is offered to all students for $5. So, Friday is World Smile Day, so don't forget to smile. All of our fall athletic teams began competing last week and our teams are doing well and our coaches and athletes report that they are having great seasons and experience, and experiences so far. School and offices are closed on Wednesday, October 9th, and we wish everyone observing Yom Kippur to have a good holy day. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and we will have a Pink Out on Friday, October 18th, to bring awareness to this event and raise some money to help cure and end breast cancer. The week of October 21st is National School Safety and School Bus Safety Week and we will have Student Wellness Day on October 31st and the focus of our teaching and learning will be school safety. Thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of the Haverford Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you, Reese.
Hello, I'm Katie Bon Giovanni and I'm a junior at Haverford High School. At Haverford, I'm a Student Senate Officer and actively involved in the Environment Club UNLESS, the Service Base Club INTERACT, Young Democrats, and Model United Nations. I'm also a member of the Haverford Ultimate Disc Alliance and I'm working to start a mock trial program at Haverford. In the audience tonight is Erica Borby and she will be the other junior representative on the board. She is an officer of Student Senate as well and involved in track, Young Democrats, World Affairs Club, Future Business Leaders of America, and Movie Club where she is the vice president. Thank you for having me here tonight to present to you some of the incredible events going on at Haverford. Students will be giving back on Tuesday, October 8th at the Red Cross Blood Drive sponsored by Student Senate in the school's gym. Donors 16 years and older have signed up to save three lives with just one donation and Student Senate members are ready to volunteer by signing people into the blood drive and making conversation with the donors as they are getting their blood drawn. The Activities Fair on Friday, September 27th was a success, but dozens of students set up around the gym displaying posters and signing students of all grades up for their clubs. Since then, many clubs have already had their first meetings of the school year, including Model UN, the new Alex's Lemonade Stand Club, the new ASL Club, Young Democrats Latin Club, the Asian Student Association Club, Speech and Debate Club, and more. Haverford athletes have been busy in the past few weeks, especially with many of the fall sports seasons ending this month. Over the weekend, the Ford's Cheerleaders cheered on participants in the CHOPS Parkway Run and Walk for Pediatric Cancer Research. The Ford's Varsity Football Team will have their next home game on the 18th against Marple Newtown following their 34-7 victory at home on Friday against Springfield. Boys Soccer is 8-3-1 and has a home game tonight against Springfield. The Field Hockey Team is 5-4 and won their last two games against Strathhaven and Heritton respectively. They, and the Girls Tennis Team, had home games today and girls soccer, tennis, and volleyball will have games tomorrow. The Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams will be representing Haverford High School Well at Rose Tree Park on Saturday, as will Field Hockey at Avon Grove that same day. It's hard to believe that the school's only been in session for a month with the activities, events, and athletics that have already happened and are on the books. With the PSAT being offered to students on October 16th and SAT being administered on October 5th and 30th, college-bound students are busy preparing for their futures. Seniors last week were invited to the library during their lunches to eat pizza and fill out common and college applications with counselors ready to help. Many college representatives will be visiting Haverford during the month of October to educate hopeful applicants about their schools, including representatives from Trinity College, Bucknell University, American University, and more. As you can see, Haverford students have been off to a strong start this fall and it is exciting to think of all that the upcoming weeks have to offer. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share these incredible things happening at Haverford High School with you all.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Reese. Moving along to our Superintendent's Agenda, which used to be called the Conference Agenda.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll get used to that in about 12 years. First item on our Superintendent's Agenda is PSBA School Board Member Recognition and I'd like to welcome Ms. Karen Devine from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association.
Thank you. Do you prefer that I go up?
Yes, please, Karen.
Thank you, it's my great pleasure to be here tonight. I've known Larry for about 20 years and it's great to be at your board meeting tonight. And Larry, if it's any consolation, when I started at PSBA, we didn't have internet. So, we have come a long way over the years. So, I am Director of Member Services at PSBA, I am your field rep as well. So, anything you need from PSBA and you're not sure who to call, I hope you will call me. I brought some leave behinds that you will see and I have some information in those kits that will be helpful. Some of the information covers our upcoming events and also we have information in there on the required school director training that will apply after this election for all re-elected school directors and newly elected school directors. And while I am mentioning that, I would like to thank you for being willing to be a host site for that. On Thursday, December 12th, training will be taking place here for your district, your board, and some of the surrounding boards. So, thank you for your willingness to host that. And then if you're not able to come to that, we also have one at PSBA on January 11th and you can also participate in the new school director training and applied school director training that's on our website. It is completely free. So, if you have any questions, I hope you'll contact me. We do have our conference coming up on October 15th. We have the Equity Summit and navigating charter school authorization, trying to help districts through that, on October 15th and then the conference is October 16th through the 18th. So, we hope to see you there. We're always working to provide more member benefits, of course we are an approved provider for the school director training. We offer crisis communication support free for our members. We offer equity services free for our members, we have a toolkit on our website, we have the Success Starts Here campaign, we hope you'll continue submitting your stories on that. So, some of the things I wanted to just mention before I recognize two school directors tonight. Tonight I brought the School Board Secretary's Handbook, we have a brand-new handbook, so I brought one tonight for you, that's there in the front. And then also, we are working on the Essentials of School Board Service Book and we will be mailing these out after the election. And we have a Year of Learning, it's like a course catalog, so it's all of the learning opportunities for school directors in one catalog, we'll mail these out also after the election. So, my primary purpose for being here tonight is to recognize two school directors under the honor role of school board service. We started doing this in 1983, it's our small way of thanking school directors for the many hours you dedicate to your community, to your public schools, to your children. You probably had no idea how many hours you would be dedicating to school board service. So, this is our small way of saying thank you. We recognize school directors at eight years of service and then every four years thereafter. And you may realize that it all began here in Pennsylvania under the Free Public Schools Act of 1834. It created the first permanent statewide interest in public education and the creation of the first school board. And then PSBA was the first school boards association, in 1895 we were established. So, we're pretty proud of it all beginning here, but we just want to thank you for all you do. So, tonight, I, I am recognizing two individuals. First of all, Dr. Martin for 16 years of service.
Now you may rest.
Thank you. And to my friend Larry Feinberg, 20 years of school board service.
Yes, yes, I was asking if we could get a picture, Karen.
That would be excellent. And thank you. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the High School Construction Update and Timelines and we have Lynn Blausch and Ken Matthews from CB Development.
Good evening, it's nice to be here again. It's nice to see you awarded, Larry and Doc Mark.
They forgot to bring the check.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're here to, tonight, to seek approval of the board to move forward with the design of the additions at the high school. And just to take us all back a little bit and remind us why we're here tonight asking that. And a little over a year ago, well, more than a year ago, in February of 2018, as part of the work with Linwood School, the board directed us to engage, or the, the board engaged KCBA to assess the balance of the schools. And in conjunction with that, the district hired a demographic consultant to look at the enrollment projections that would be occurring in the next 10 years. And as a result of both the assessment of the schools from an architectural and a, and a building function, combined with the enrollment studies, it was decided that you needed more classrooms in the high school. Specifically, the study, enrollment study showed that the elementary schools were, were fairly flat, that they would remain consistent in enrollment, but that the high school had a huge enrollment increase to the order of magnitude of 400 students. So, we, you engaged KCBA to move, to look at options on how to accommodate at, at the high school level that additional student body. So, we went through a series of studies and decided the best way was to add classrooms in the back and then because you're gonna have 400 more students, you're also gonna have a need to increase your music and your phys ed rooms. So, the, the schematic was presented early this year to you and it showed the addition of 15 classrooms with, which negated three, so you have a net 12 classrooms added and then an increase to both the choral and the music facilities and an expansion of the workout facility and life study room. So, tonight, we're, we're here to ask to move forward from schematics to go into construction documentation. Since you've seen us on the high school, we have been busy though, we've been going through zoning hearings and we did that in advance of asking you to move forward in, because we weren't sure what the zoning board was going to require. And the, as a result of those hearings, the, the only change in design is that they've asked for a green roof on 50% of the addition. So, we, we had to go through three hearings and most recently, at this last hearing in early September, we were approved to move forward. So, what we, we want to do is now get into the land development process with the hope of having the documents done this time next year so that we can bid and work and start December, January, December 2020, January 2021, so that we can have the classrooms available for, for all those students in fall of 2021. So, tonight, the KCBA has given us a price to, to do that work and it's a total of 858,256. That includes all their work, the civil work, and redoing some of the schematics to move it to the rear of the building. If you recall, they originally designed it, I'll, I'll say it, to the right of the high school. And after much thought, we, we asked them to reconsider and look at the rear to minimize the, the impact to the adjacent neighbors and parking. And, and we ended up, I think, with a better location and a better design. In addition, they will need 6,800 just to redo the design to deal with the, the green roof. And then we've asked them to study, do an option study to add air conditioning to the gym. And that's only a concept level, once we come up with the various options, we'll be back to you to, to get the complete design price approved.
Sorry, did I just hear you say AC in the gym, like climate control in the high school gymnasium?
Yeah, air conditioning. And, and $2,400 to get a third-party estimate so that we can review the options with, and quantify those options from a monetary standpoint, so we can have the pros and cons as well as the cost. So, the total of everything is 867,456. Do you have any questions?
Can you elaborate on the green roof?
The zoning board asked, well, required, stipulated as part of their approval that we have a green roof in, in 50% of the addition. It's not a huge impact, it will require probably additional steel, structural steel, and it will, because you'll need to support that, the plant, plants. We haven't really determined where best to do that, that'll be part of the design process.
Plant material?
You put trays, it's plastic trays of grass basically on the roof.
Yeah.
Plastic trays of grass on the roof.
Plastic trays of grass on the roof.
So, it helps with the impervious coverage because we're already over, that was one of the variances we requested.
Now, when you add it up between our newest schools, we have every form of new infiltration, stormwater control there is, except for mud puddles, excuse me, what do you call them?
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens, okay. So, I would like to be able to have the district be an example for the kids to be able to tour it. Could we just ask the architects, I know that the green roof would be above everything else, so we can't have it so that there's a taller place you look down on it. We have a green roof at Drexel where we run people through and they can see it. But if there's some way that we can make it so that people, a green roof that people can walk on, it's horribly expensive. But some way that we can get people to the edge in a catwalk and the kids can see this is what it is.
We can certainly do that. I mean, the, the challenge of where to find the green roof location is because the roof is where we put all the mechanical equipment too. So, it is going to be part of the design process to figure out the best place and maybe we can find somewhere that they can look down on. I mean, we do have, in addition to both the choral and the music room, so we'll certainly look there.
Visually accessible, that's the word I'd say, visually.
And not just from a drone, I assume, so, yeah.
Does it have to be watered, is it completely, completely fed by the rain?
It's, it's, that'll be part of the design process, you know, they'll come up with, usually it's sedum that they use, which uses very little water and it does, you know, it uses the rain. You're not gonna irrigate it, if that's really your question.
I guess for it to be truly green, it would require very little, if not zero maintenance.
You would hope, yep.
Did the Board of Commissioners elaborate on why they're requiring this?
No.
I know with Linwood, it wasn't required, it's just...
You know, we were asking a vari, we were asking a series of variances, one of which was that we don't meet the impervious, we're exceeding the impervious coverage. So, I, I can't real, that's allowable. So, we really can't guess why they did, but that could be why.
Try to recoup some of that.
Yes.
I would like to comment at the closing of the testimony for the zoning board. Apparently the system, you can correct me on this, is they notify all of the neighbors by registered mail and the second neighbor's behind there, and I estimate this at about 200 houses, that this is gonna happen. And so, at the very last meeting where the zoning board asked for testimony, nobody showed up. And this was the first week of school. So, if the high school was really bothering the neighbors, the first week of school after a quiet summer, you would have expected mobs with, mobs with pitchforks. So, the neighborhood accepts the high school is there.
There were some people that came to some of the initial meetings, they were really supportive of the school and the school district, although kids had apparently gone through the school. And, and they actually knew us from all the construction and, and were glad to see that, that there were improvements in that it was being managed. So, I, I do think it was a positive feel from the community and I, and no one did show up in the next two meetings.
Two questions, in the schedule that you mentioned, starting work in December 2020 and being done for the start of the school year in 2021, does that mean that both the classroom wing and the fitness and music area gets expanded at the same time? I think previously we had talked about phasing it.
Yeah, as part of the design, we'll be repricing it like we always do. At the end of schematics, we did an estimate, we'll do one at design development and we'll have a better sense on how to phase it because we're phasing it because of cash flow issues. And, you know, we were charged to, us and KCBA, to come up with the most cost-efficient way to resolve the 400 extra kid, children. And we know that there was a limit on how much can be borrowed and, and we had worked with the district to, to do a cash flow projection and that's what resulted in the two phases. We did have some economies in Linwood that resulted in some additional savings there that we could utilize on the high school. So, we're not sure how to phase it right now, but we do, are, we do know the first phase will be the classrooms. The question is, what part of the second phase would we do early? Would it be the parking lot or would it be some of the renovations or, or the addition? So, we'll probably have a better answer to that in, at the end of design development, which is on around February 2020.
Okay. And then my other question, looking at the architect's contract amount and working with a figure of about $16 million for the project, that was a, it's about 6% of the kind of preliminary budget, is that a typical allocation for design and other architectural services?
Yeah, actually, it's, it's, the 16 million was the whole project, including soft costs. So, their, their price right now is on or around 7%, which is very typical on a renovation and addition and also a multi-phase project. So, I think we got, we negotiated a fairly good deal with them and it's, it's definitely a competitive rate.
Quick question, your number came in a little lower than our not-to-exceed number on the proposal.
You know, I didn't include the, the, there was about $6,000 that they included in case we don't give them a survey, which we have done. So, we, we won't need to do that. I think originally we weren't sure if we were gonna get that survey from the prior surveyor. So, I mean, I would say, we were able to get that, so we can, we can go with the lower amount. You can approve the higher, we'll make sure they don't only get paid the lower.
Other questions, comments from the board? While we have you standing up there, anything we need to know about Linwood?
Yes, one quick item, sneaking in a change order while we're here. So, environmentally, as you know, there was an old oil tank at Linwood that had to be removed. As part of that, you take all the good oil out, but you can only take so much out. At the bottom of the tank is kind of a sludge material that's no good. It's hard to estimate how much that is, so the environmental consultant always knew that was gonna be a change. So, what we're presenting tonight is a change order for $5,133 for pumping out that sludge, you have to legally dispose of it. So, it's a cost that we always knew was there, but it's just quantifying it. In the contract, there was a unit price to do that, their unit price was ridiculous for that, we rejected it. And then this change was negotiated down to this amount. The original change order was submitted for around $32,000, so we got it down to where it's supposed to be, so. And that's all we have for, tonight for Linwood. But other than that, this is the first day it's rained in probably a month, so they're flying along with foundations and they're talking about starting steel a little early, so we'll, I'll reserve that until we see it, but, so we're hoping to pick up some time, which is great.
Are we sure that the tank isn't leaking?
Yes, that was all, the ground's tested, that's all part of the removal. When they did that, they have sniffing devices and then they test the soil.
Got it, okay.
So, that's all, all been cleared, yep.
Taking, the kids are keeping an eye on things over there?
Yeah, they have their pictures up there in the hallway, so now they're seeing a lot of activity. And then really, once steel comes within the next month, then it will really start to take shape. It'll be exciting.
Other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Exciting stuff with the middle schooler.
Last item on our Superintendent's Agenda is Enrollment Update, Ms. Battistelli.
Good evening, Dr. Rucci, members of the board, community members and colleagues. Tonight I'm gonna present on an enrollment update.
Let me guess, it's growing.
It is. So, before I start getting into the numbers, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that when we look at the enrollment numbers, we typically look this time of year because we like to compare the same snapshot in time from year to year. So, what we're looking at today is October 1 of this year and what we looked at last year was October 1 of 2018. And a lot happens in between October 1 of last year and this year, students are moving in and out of the district, consistent, you know, all throughout the year, yep. So, I just wanna put that out there before we get started. The first slide shows the projections for this school year compared to the actual numbers and these numbers, the projections were accurate. The difference was under 1%. You know, 22 students over 3,000 some students, it's not significant. But what I will dive into is Chatham Park, because that's where the number is a little further off.
Can I just make, so, the projections, could you speak about where those numbers came from, because I understand these are not what were, was in that demographic study that Lynn referenced?
Sure, so, my understanding is last year we had the demographic study, then we had our enrollment. The enrollment was well over the projections and so continuing with those projections over five years would not really make sense, we kind of had to look at that number again and project out. And so, that's the, we did an additional projection and those are these numbers based on last year's enrollment numbers, sure. So, I highlighted in red anywhere where we were five or more students over projections and anywhere that's highlighted blue were five or more students under the projections. The only one, and I picked the number five and I said, I don't, five's not really a significant number when you're talking, you know, we're talking about one kid per class at that point, you know, it's not a huge number. But Chatham Park, you can see the kindergarten, were 19 students over what was projected. the kindergarten, were 19 students over what was projected. And kindergarten, we talk about every year, because that's just the really hard spot to predict. When we look at the students who enrolled, we can't really tell if they're newly moved into the district based on their daycare or preschool, because, you know, as a parent, I, you know, you could have your child placed at a daycare preschool close to your work or in your community, so we really can't tell from previous schools. When we're looking at sixth and ninth grade, and, you know, the older grades, we can say the student moved in from a neighboring school district, this student came from a cyber charter school, with kindergarten, these are students that are here, and not sure how many are new to the area, and we were just over at Chatham by a bit.
Could call it the Parker Effect.
Okay.
Dr. Parker.
This is the middle school enrollment, and you'll see, pretty, pretty darn close to the projections in most areas. Sixth grade, we saw 34 new students to Haverford Township. So I'm going to go onto the next slide and talk a little bit more about where those students came from, but this is the projections for this year versus actuals, and you can see the slide from last year as well, so you can compare. And when we look at these numbers, again, if we're looking at sixth grade from last year, those are now seventh graders this year.
530 is now 518 as a cohort, is that what you're saying?
The 520 is now 518. So the lower slide is last year, the slide at the top is this year. And so the 526 graders are now the 518 seventh graders. And that reflects some new students, some students have moved, again, you know, it's not that we only lost two students, there could have been, you know, 10 students that moved out, and so many students that moved in, because it's very, it fluctuates so, so much throughout the year. Now, the sixth grade students that were new to Haverford School District, 20 of those students were new to the district, new move-ins. Two of the students in their previous district were homeschooled, and two of the students in their previous district were in charter schools, and they're now coming to our middle school. And 14 of the students came from local private or parochial schools in the area. And we're going to look at the high school enrollment, and again, when you look at the number, ninth grade last year, that 453 is now the 449 this year. And when we look at the ninth grade, you know, we had, those were the eighth graders last year. And that was a 513 on the previous slide, so you can flip back.
This 10th grade is our last class below 500 for a while, isn't it?
Yes. Yes.
So that's, that's really when our growth in our township picks up, is this freshman class?
Yep. And on the next slide, I'm going to dive into the ninth graders. Okay, so we had 40 new students in ninth grade, and again, if you see the fifth grade, or sixth, I'm sorry, eighth to ninth grade, not a huge variance in numbers, but because of move-ins and moves out, these are 40 new students to Haverford School District. Of these students, 20 came from local private or parochial schools, 18 of them were new move-ins from other districts, and two were students who were residing within our school district, but at cyber charter schools, and are now coming to our high school.
Are those students in our blended learning program?
I don't believe so, I, no, I think they're coming to our high school, yeah. Do you have any questions? That was the last of, it's not the most exciting presentation, but...
Does it feel more crowded at the high school?
As I say, you may not know this about me, but I love spreadsheets, and so I look at all this data, and like, it's nice, there's a lot of different people there, so it's good, yeah, but it does feel like there's a lot of people, yeah. I was going to say that I looked at the data and then kind of turned it into a spreadsheet and tried to like, make some more sense of it, and looking at the enrollment now in the high school, it's 1,900. In two years, if you just look back each of the four years by the kind of graduating class, we'll be at about 2,000 students, two years after that, we'll be at 2,100. So it definitely shows this need for expanding the high school, and as Kim mentioned, yeah, we've got the three classes below 500 students in our most upper grade.
Yes.
And there are, our third grade, looks like it has 556 kids, so fully 100 more than who's in our graduating class this year. So some pretty big trends in growth and, and things to think about as we prepare space plans and, and looking at this exciting influx of students.
That's a good observation in terms of, you know, you're looking at what, what we have been describing for the public, the children who are already in our system, and how they're going to move through. Then we have to layer on top of that a percentage of children who will, who will leave the private schools and come into our, our high school as well, so that will add even more. And those numbers have been growing over just the last three years. I don't know how much farther back, but over the last three years, we see an increase in the number of children coming to us from the parochial and private schools.
For that ninth grade entry point?
Yes.
Yeah, business is good.
I wonder if a portion of this is related to rising tuition costs for college, so families are realizing they're spending all this money on private education in the K-12 sector, and they're shifting it to save up for college.
With all the students in the high school and more coming, we're talking about doing some work there. I, I hope with all of these new students, more traffic, more wear and tear, we're taking care of it, and I'm sure we are to the best of our abilities and then some, because, like I just said, more students, more traffic, more wear and tear, and we're, we're about to invest in this building a little bit more. Significant commu, I appreciate all the work that I know your staff is putting into keeping it up.
In terms of a little context, for the longest time of my tenure on the board, we've been under 6,000 students, and we're sitting at about 66, 6,600 now, so that's 10% bump. My math registers are still working. And, and, you know, so, you know, we're, we're looking at a need for an increase in the physical plant at the high school, but it's also going to trigger several other, you know, growth points, and the way things are going, unless we start actively discouraging people from moving into the township, and get crowded. You know, we just had a, there was just a nice article in the Inquirer yesterday or the day before, but they, they didn't really talk about the school district, but apparently people are finding that this is a nice place to live, so we're happy about that, but it, it does present some challenges for the administration, and it presents some challenges for the board, and, you know, there's always demands for all kinds of services and attention, and I know that, you know, I've heard from several quarters about discussing full-day kindergarten again, and those are some of the kinds of trade-offs that we have to look at. You know, one of the, we're looking at constraints in how we build the high school, because we can only borrow so much money at a time. It increases our debt service, and the state has provided us with a limit on how much we can raise taxes, so it's...
And also, we heard from Lynn tonight about the amount of space that we can use to build.
Yeah.
You know, when you want to construct something, there's only so much space that you can...
So it's, it's challenges, but they're, they're good challenges?
Yes, good challenges to have.
Other questions, comments from the board?
Also, I want to make a plug for people trying to figure out their careers, maybe they're going into grad school or undergrad, and they're trying to like, figure out what they're going to study, being that we have such a shortage of teachers here in Pennsylvania and in the nation more broadly, this shows that business is booming, there are jobs for teachers, so go, go become a teacher.
And before I sit down, I just wanted to thank Mr. David Parker, looks at these numbers pretty much weekly, and he keeps me up to date on any changes that happen, so I want to thank Mr. Parker for keeping track of all our numbers as the year goes on.
Can I just ask another question? In terms, like, we see that there's growth, did you look at any changes in kind of the demographics or student population that way?
For this, I didn't.
No, maybe we'll do that.
But maybe we can...
And then for the elementary schools, which seem, that's where we're seeing our largest classes, could someone just speak to kind of their capacity? I, we're looking at the high school and its ability to have these classes, but those children are in our elementary schools now, and, and are we able to...
Well, I, I won't, I won't pretend that they're not tight. I mean, you, you will see, they, they, they are tight in all of our, all of our elementary buildings, but we still stay within the class size guidelines, so we have not exceeded those class side, size guidelines in any of the, any of the classrooms across the building. I think it's a testament to the teachers in the classrooms and the building principals in the way that they keep things moving and flowing, and our kids still do well.
That's great.
Do we have any situations in any of the elementary schools now where art and music are on a cart, or do we have classroom space?
No, we have in the buildings where, where an auditorium is available, so like, over at Cooper Town, over in Linwood. You're not doing it in Chatham yet. In those two buildings, there are some music classes that are taught in that auditorium space during, during the day, and that has helped to create a classroom that can be used.
You know, prior to building some of the newer facilities in some of the older elementary schools, we had art and music on a cart, we had, some folks were in offices that were actually large closets, I think, is that fair to say? Like on landings, so we're not, we're not bursting at the seams yet.
Auditorium's a great place for a music class. Get them comfortable on a stage.
Yes, yes. You know, and if you'll recall, you did add, you know, we added the modulators to Cooper Town this year, so, you know, to create more space over there for those folks. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Nicole.
Okay, so, I am over here.
Yep, yep, number six.
That's good. Middle school student, if you'd like to stay, you're welcome, but if you, you know, if you'd like to get out of here before we start talking about all this interesting stuff, you're welcome.
Depends on what dad wants to do.
You're welcome to do that, yeah.
Dad's giving you a thumbs up. Nice job again, Reese, welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number six, I'll accept the motion to approve disbursements from the following fund as listed.
Moved, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of the new Linwood Elementary School Project Architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and Owner's Representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize change orders as listed.
Moved, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, I'll accept the motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the Falcon Center Tax Assessment Appeal pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2018-009815, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Has that building sold, actually, or is it...
It's under agreement of sale.
They have an agreement of sale, okay.
Proceeding toward closing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, I'll accept a motion to approve a consulting service agreement with Gilbert Consulting LLC to provide training, program review, and general oversight of the food service operations based on the needs of the district through June 30, 2020.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, I'll accept a motion to approve the proposal for strategic plan development with Judith Wilson LLC at a cost not to exceed $18,000.
Moved, second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Dr. Ruscie, can you tell us a little bit about when this will launch? And what, remind the community from two weeks ago what this would look like?
We would hope to launch this in November with some individual interviews and small group forums that would consist of, you know, board members, administrators, student representatives from both the high school and the middle school, PTA, you know, various PTA groups, moving on to an open forum for parents and community members, you know, more than, more than one, really looking at more of a, of a visioning, you know, where do we, where do we see ourselves going as a, a community educating our students? What is our ultimate goal in that educational process? And then the result being goals that we would articulate for a three to five-year period of time, each with action steps that would be designed to be completed, you know, have a touch point within 18 months, and then, you know, continue on our trajectory for a three to five-year period of time.
Community involvement is offered.
There are, there are many, yes, many entry points, there will be a survey that will go out to all community members as well, so, yeah, there's...
Not just users of the district, but the entire community?
It will go to the entire community. We also know from our recent communication survey that that response rate more than likely will be low, but our parent response rate is great, you know, when we send surveys out, so that will be, that will be good, it will. And we will continue to reach out through the group, you know, we have some liaison capability, you know, we work closely with the township, we work closely with the library, closely with the local ministerium, and they help us to get that information out to people who perhaps do not have children currently in our schools.
If I remember correctly, there'll be a, a committee of over 20 individuals sourced from the district, the parent community, student community...
Yes, who will spend...
That will work on the finished product...
Yes.
With the strategic plan.
Yes.
How would a community member raise their hand if they, you know, through the forums and the surveys?
Yes, that will come out through, mostly through the forums, you know, people will be identified if they want continued interest in, you know, continued involvement, if they're interested in that.
Any other questions, comments?
An outstanding question for me is, just getting a sense of Ms. Wilson, whoever takes on this work, you know, what training they have in cultural competence and engaging and supporting and amplifying the voices of people from diverse backgrounds and abilities. When I had asked a question last time about reaching out to maybe language minority families, Ms. Wilson cited using Google Translate, which is not the best way to go about that, and I was also wondering for people who might have disabilities, how they could be engaged in this process. So I appreciate the vision and the, the aim for this to include all voices, but I just would like to learn more about how we will truly do that and through this work.
I think, you know, you've done a, a pretty good job of giving voice to these concerns in broad context with the district, and we look forward to you providing that same role as part of the strategic planning process, so I, I think you'll make sure that it happens. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Item number 11, I'll accept the motion to approve KCBA architect's proposal to move forward with the next phase of the Haverford High School renovation project at a cost not to exceed $871,351.
Target.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Ruscie, I understand that what used to be called the superintendent's report is now... Human Resources.
Yes. The first item there, I'll ask you to accept the resignations that are, that are listed.
Moved. Motion?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One second, let us pull it up on our devices since we're on this board docs, if you don't mind. It's in the superintendent's report?
It's in Human Resources.
Human Resources, there we go. And we're on appointments, B.
We're on two.
Thank you.
Second item there, B, appointments, we ask you to approve the following appointments as are listed.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Could I ask about, there are nine or 10 staff positions or appointments for Colonial Living Program? Could someone speak to what that is?
Jen Sax, who can?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Colonial Living is a curricular, a set of curricular field trips that our elementary students engage in. So our, our fourth grade and fifth grade students each take a trip, one to Nider Hall, which is sort of back near Karakong, and one over to Federal School, which is over near Cooper Town. And while there, they actually, it's an immersive experience, so they engage in activities that would have been occurring during the 18th century and 19th century as folks were settling and developing here. Those who have been may recall making candles, cooking stew, gathering firewood, sitting in a one-room schoolhouse, practicing handwriting, actually doing these things. The, the folks that you see on this list that we are approving act as guides, so they impart knowledge about the time period, they guide the children through the actual activities. They're really enthusiastic folks who have a love for history and, and work well with children. So we are part of the process of hiring them, and then we've got a really great, Kelly Brennan is our coordinator, and she really makes sure that they're on top of things, and, and we work together with the Historical Society to create this experience for all of our students. Thank you.
Sure.
Been looking some, up the website, we used to own this school.
We used to own the entire property behind that school.
Yeah, all gates. The township, the district bought all gates and Federal School was on that property for a middle school that lost community support, I read. That was interesting.
Currently the township takes care of it.
Right.
Any other comment or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, leaves of absence, I ask you to approve the request for the following leaves of absence.
Move.
Target.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, item D, I ask you to approve the rates of compensation for athletic activities, events for the 1920 school year as listed.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
In that list, and it's extensive and impressive that there are so many offerings, it sounds like Katie took advantage of a whole bunch of them that are on the list. I also noticed that there are several positions that are marked as to be announced or they're not filled now. So in places like the, the student newspaper and the TV program, when there's not a, a sponsor current for that, does that mean those activities aren't able to happen?
We're still looking.
Okay.
And we will continue to post for, and I know that this is not necessarily a centrally-driven process in central administration, it's more of a building, I guess endeavor...
Okay.
To find the talent, whether it's in-house, and, and the lion's share of our coaches and activity sponsors are in-house, professionals that work for the district. But we also try to tap into the community, and there are lots of examples of talented folks in the community who do in fact come in and apply for these positions. So we just continue to, to look. Is that correct, Ms. Dunne?
Both activities are up and running right now. They are up and running, but are looking for that teacher or some kind of sponsor. Okay. And, and yeah, so this does sound like an opportunity. I know like the robotics club had reached out and is looking for someone to continue that program, so if there are interested members of the community with skill sets... We already have a new teacher who jumped on board with that. Oh, that's great.
The current seventh grade soccer coach was identified through an email to the community. So we're, you know, exhausting a lot of resources to find people, and thankfully somebody raised their hand.
That's great. It's an, it's an impressive and diverse set of activities for our kids to get involved in, and so it's nice to know that, you know, that there is the support so that the clubs can continue.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And while we're on it, it does appear twice, it will appear as an item in curriculum and instruction, where student educational excursions will now appear with this new format that we are using. But given that we've got it right here, we'll just, I'll ask you to approve the student educational excursion as listed.
Moved.
Target.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Rusi. Item number 13, I'll accept a motion to approve the administrative recommendation for the educational service agreement for student 10-56859 for an amount not to exceed $139,350.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, I'll accept a motion to approve the following educational contract for students attending out-of-district placement for the 2019-2020 school year as listed.
Moved.
Target.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, board reports, Mr. Sinto.
From the Pennsylvania School Boards Association liaison front, just a couple of things. The PSBA has introduced a couple new resources for members. One of them is a crisis communication services, which provides complimentary support 24/7 for member districts in the midst of an urgent or crisis situation. The other is PA Charter Change, which is a website that presents factual data on charters and their public cost. Both of these new resources can be found on psba.org, or for those of us who are attending the PSBA conference, there'll be some booths set up for that. I had the opportunity to serve on the platform committee a couple of weeks ago, and I know that some of us are, are headed to the conference. I'll be there, but I won't be part of the meetings. I'm volunteering as the entertainment director for the student showcase, so I'll see you there. There's some nice acts across the state of some students who will be providing entertainment on that Thursday night. So for those of us who are going, I'll see you there, and, and those are the resources that are available from the PSBA, so.
Great. Thanks, Kristen.
No report.
Bridgette?
I was just going to mention that I'm looking forward to going to my first PSBA conference and seeing what all the excitement is about. And I've just been spending a lot of time on soccer sidelines, and last week was also the middle school series of back-to-school nights. I went to one of them, and it's always impressive to just see all that, that's going on and put a face to the, the name of the teacher and the, you know, all of the, the good content and opportunities our kids have there. So it's nice to have that chance to be in the school.
Yeah. Great. Dr. Morgan?
No report.
No report.
Colleen?
No report.
Little report. We've had some unbelievable weather since our meeting two weeks ago, and I think it was in between on Saturday, I, I happened to see a mum sale going on at the middle school, so of course I stopped. And then a little further up the street, there's a car wash going on. So I just want to say a big shout out to all the students and parents for getting out there and fundraising, and all the people who drove by, stopped, and supported our students and their activities.
I can report that the girls' soccer team raised $1,600 at their car wash a couple weekends ago. So thank you to the community for your generous support.
I didn't even get a car wash out of it.
Great, thanks. Susan?
You know, I, I just wanted to comment on the high school, the opportunity that the counselors are giving these kids to go in and eat pizza and do the applications. Having raised four and filling out four different applications, I think I wrote four essays, maybe? I certainly did edit them and correct them.
You're not supposed to write them.
I don't think I wrote them, but you know, I corrected them. Maybe I wrote one, maybe one.
Doing them and...
The older ones, it was the older ones who didn't know them. But I just think...
On tape, right?
No, no, Pete knows, Pete knows exactly who I'm talking about. I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for everybody, parents as well as kids, to really learn from each other and learn from school counselors rather than at the kitchen table. So I congratulate us on, on the counselors on that idea, and Pete, it's a great idea. Thank you. I didn't write any. Well, maybe.
That's great, thank you very much. On the legislative side, the Pennsylvania House and Senate are both in recess until October 21st. The Special Ed Funding Commission has started a series of hearings around the state. Special Ed is one of the fastest rising cost drivers, right behind pensions and charters, pretty much for just about all 500 school districts. Since 2013-14, our, our funding from the state has increased about one and a half percent per year, but our costs have averaged increases of over 6% a year. Statewide, over $4.7 billion was spent on providing mandatory services for special needs kids in 1718 year. Locally, our school district for the '08-'09 school year spent $15.2 million. For the 1718 school year, we spent $23.5 million. The state contributed $294,000 of that increase. Local taxpayers picked up the other $8 million. So that's what it looks like. It's federal law, it's great for the kids, we're required to do it. The federal government was supposed to fund the excess costs at 40% when they passed the law back when Jimmy Carter was president. They've never gotten above, I don't know, maybe 17 or 18%. There's a bill pending, House Resolution 1878, I think, in Congress right now that would set up a 10-year flight path for full 40% funding. Most of the local, the southeast congresspeople have pretty much co-sponsored. I think there's five or six out of the 18 congresspeople in the state that have co-sponsored the bill bipartisan. And there's a law in Congress now that I believe if they get up to 190 co-sponsors, then they're required to bring the bill to the floor regardless of whether leadership wants to or not. So if you know people in the other parts of the state, you can ask them if they've reached out to their congresspeople and ask them to co-sponsor special ed legislation. It would help every district in the state. The other major piece on the legislative side is that the governor has taken a strong leadership role in pushing for charter school reform and especially for cyber charter reform and revisions to cyber charter funding. And we absolutely appreciate the work that he's done in that regard, keeping the, keeping these issues in the public. There's been a lot of press coverage all over the state, and, and we thank him for that. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, resignations, and leaves of absence. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.